Good evening to staff, to members of council, members of the public. Welcome to our regular council meeting for September the 24th. I would like to let everyone know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded and livestreamed on the Town of Innisville's YouTube channel. So thank you for those of you who are joining us from home. And all of your comments tonight shall form part of the record, which will be retained according to the Town's retention bylaw. And for more information about that bylaw, you can see the fine folks in the clerk's The Town of Innisville acknowledges that we are situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history. The town acknowledges that this land is the traditional territories of the First Peoples of Turtle Island. It is shared between the Anishnaabe people of Bozale First Nation, Chipwaz of Rama First Nation, and the Chipwaz of Georgina Island First Nation, and we thank them for their generations of stewardship. This meeting place is still home to many indigenous people, and as settlers, we are grateful to have the opportunity to work on this land. The town acknowledges the four sacrifices that are the foundation of Canadian society today. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit. And with Truth and Reconciliation Day right around the corner, I think it's more appropriate than ever to do our land acknowledgement statement this evening. We'll start with our open forum, which is item two on our agenda. We have no people who have signed up for open forum, so we'll now go to the approval of the agenda. We have had some agenda repair required since the meeting was first, the agenda was first posted a week ago. We have an additional delegation that has come in from Ms. Montgomery regarding Uber service. We have an additional staff report that was deferral, that there's a deferral request for that has now been removed at the request of the applicant. And we also have an item under F1 regarding a resolution to talk about automated speed enforcement. Now, that item would require two-thirds vote to be on the agenda this evening. So if there's anybody who is sympathetic to premier forward and wanting to do away with them all, now would be a time to not vote for this. But do we need to separate any of those items before we move forward? Seeing none, could I ask for a mover and a seconder, please, for the recommendation for the approval of the agenda as amended? Moved by Councillor Waters and seconded by Councillor Richardson. All those in favor of the agenda as that is carried. Next, we'll move on to disclosure of interest. Is there any member of council who has a pecuniary or conflict on any item on tonight's agenda? I'm seeing none, but if one becomes apparent to you through our proceedings, please let it be known at that time. So we're at item five, which is presentations and petitions, and we're delighted to have with us tonight Don Goodyear, the General Manager of Integrated Watershed Management, and Bill Thompson, Manager of Watershed Plans and Source Water Protection, and from the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority. So welcome, gentlemen, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Dolan, and thank you to you and members of council for the opportunity to be here this evening. My colleague Bill and I are here to talk to you about chloride in the watershed, as the title suggests. And I'm going to start with a little bit of a snapshot of the status of chloride across the Lake Simcoe watershed. Spoiler alert, it's not great. And then Bill is going to hopefully pick up the mood with some opportunities to address the challenge. The first slide here is giving us a picture of chloride concentration at the outlet of Lake Simcoe. So this is chloride measured at Atherton Narrows, starting way back in the 1970s, where it was around 10 mg per liter, something akin to background concentration at the time. But you can see the blue dots there, kind of a relentless and steady incline, up to about 65 mg per liter is where we sit today. The red line at the top of the graph is the threshold that the Canadian Council for Ministers in the Environment has set, the Chronic Guideline for Chloride. If unchecked, we're going to reach that threshold sometime in the next few decades, and we don't want to cross that line. There'll be environmental impacts that are significant, so we definitely want to turn the curve, so to speak. Oops, did I go, I did, I went twice, sorry about that. Here we go. So that chloride in the watershed is coming from somewhere, and it's coming from the tributaries. So these arrows across the map here show the trend in chloride concentration within the rivers feeding into Lake Simcoe. A lot of up arrows. There's no down arrows, and the two or three, well, half a dozen yellow kind of sideways arrows mean no trend. But pretty much everywhere, we're seeing an increase in chloride concentration, primarily due to road salt application. Apologies for the busyness of this slide here, but wanted to zoom in on what those up arrows mean. I'll unpack this a little bit for you. So the circles represent the percentage of samples taken that exceed, on the top, it's the Chronic Guideline, that is 120 mg per liter, and on the bottom, it's the Acute Guideline for Chloride, 640 mg per liter. And the period of record here is in brackets on the top there, so from January to December 2014 all the way through 2023. A couple of things to point out on this slide. The red boxes surround our most challenging areas. Not surprisingly, they're in the urban centers of Aurora, Newmarket, and Berry. Glass half-full, the circles that represent the Innisville Creeks, it's the 10s over 0 and the 4 over 0 in the creeks within the town there. So no exceedances of acute guidelines for the town, and 10% or less of the samples taken exceed the Chronic Guideline. So relatively good news relative to some of those urban areas. And then the last thing I'll point out here is just down near the bottom of the slide, that 94 over 46. That is in the Town of Newmarket, in a highly urbanized area. So 94% of the samples taken, that's all year long, including the summer, exceed the Chronic Guideline, and 46% exceed that acute threshold. And here's why. So the yellow outline is the catchment for that creek, very highly developed, a lot of industrial, commercial, institutional land use, so a lot of salt application on those paved surfaces to keep them safe during the winter. A new threshold for us to consider here, soaring, I'm going to back up one slide again. The picture in the left-hand side of the screen, because this area is kind of our hotspot in the watershed, rather than taking a grab sample every two weeks to analyze for chloride, we installed a sensor to take measurements every 30 minutes to get a really, a really good handle on what chloride is doing in this highly urbanized catchment. And that's what it's doing. A new threshold to worry about, ocean water. So in three instances this past winter, Western Creek had concentrations of chloride that were saltier than the ocean. Pretty alarming stuff, and not surprisingly, this tributary has the worst scores in terms of ecological health. So the fish and the bent湖 communities in this river score the worst across the watershed. Last couple of slides for me before I hopefully turn the mood up with Bill's slides on what we can do about it. As kind of science nerds, we're always interested in kind of chasing the data, and we were really interested in the myth out there that more salt is better. So the pictures on the screen here show an appropriate salt application. That's the right-hand image, the 60 grams per meter squared. Doesn't look like a lot of salt there, but that's what best practices suggest should be applied to effectively deal with salt. But it's not surprising to see, I'm sure we've all come across parking lots and, well, parking areas that are salted like the images on the left. 100,000 times as many as, as much salt applied as is required. So we invested in a friction tester to see if more is indeed better. You don't need to understand the units or the numbers on the bottom, except that 0.5 or higher is considered a safe surface. There's enough friction to walk across it safely. So the surface on the left, a little bit of salt, even though it's wet, is a very safe surface to walk on. The surface on the right, even though it's dry, because all of that salt is underfoot, is actually more slippery, kind of like marbles under your feet. Going a step further, an oversalted walkway is similarly slippery to an unsalted walkway that's just shoveled on the right, and has the same degree of friction as an oversalted walkway. And finally, just out of interest sake, we took measurements for a couple of surfaces. One is the basement of our office, another a nearby mall that we traverse all the time in every kind of footwear, and they are, they have more friction than an oversalted surface, but not considered safe in some cases. So we wonder about the test that we're giving ourselves. Is a perfectly dry, perfectly clear surface really the target? And with that, I'll pass it over to Bill.
So I think you've seen from Don that chloride salt really is a challenge for Lake Simcoe and the tributaries, but we're not naive enough to say, don't use salt, right? This is Canada, we have winter, public safety matters. So the challenge in front of us is actually a bit more difficult, and that's the challenge of protecting public safety and protecting the health of the lake. Now, the good news is there are a number of training programs and best practices available for contractors and road staff to adopt better practices, but there are some real barriers to that adoption as well. So barriers around, if I change my practices, will I increase my exposure to liability? Will I increase my costs? What's public feedback going to be? And these are very common comments we get when we, when we talk about some of these better practices. Now, we've been very fortunate over the past number of years. We were able to observe a couple of organizations change from more conventional practices to some of these better practices, collect some data while it was happening, and we can really test some of these concerns in real time with real situations. And so what I want to talk to you about tonight is a large big box store in our watershed, where they, they did allow us to test, I should say, study the amount of salt that they applied to their parking lot for the period of about 10 years, and to study the quality of the water flowing off that parking lot for that, that period of time. So they're very generous with us. The only thing they said is, please don't use our name. So we called them Parking Lot C to allow them to remain anonymous. Now, we got really lucky in that halfway through that study, they changed their contractor. So again, we'll, we'll call them Contractor A and Contractor B to remain anonymous, but it became really, really interesting when you saw the difference between these two contractors. So obviously, they're managing the same property, they have the same client, they've got largely the same equipment, they've got the same interest of maintaining, you know, keeping their client happy, keeping their business afloat. Operationally, though, they are very different in how they operate. So Contractor A, the first contractor, is kind of a conventional contractor in that they have a set amount of salt they use in that parking lot. Every time there's a winter weather event, they send a truck out and they put down a truckload of salt. If it's a really bad event, they'll send their truck out twice and put down two truckloads. Contractor B, in the second half of the study, was someone who's followed better practices. Every time there's a winter weather event, they sent a person out, and that person assessed based on their professional judgment if that weather event was imminent, if it might miss the property, and they assessed if the amount of residual salt on the pavement. And they used that information to develop a prescription for that parking lot on that day to that weather event. And the end result is pretty striking. So Contractor A, that conventional contractor, went out on average more times per winter and used more salt when they did go out, with the end result being what you see in the graph here, where Contractor B, in the red bars, maintained the same parking lot with half as much salt as Contractor A. Now, you might say, well, every winter is different, maybe Contractor B got lucky. That doesn't seem to be the case here. The dotted line on the figure is the total amount of winter precipitation. You can see there's no real pattern in that. And most importantly, the municipality where this parking lot is located went out more often in the second half of the study rather than the first half of the study. So this isn't about Contractor B getting lucky, this is about Contractor B being good at their job and being willing to take on those better practices. It's our estimate that Contractor B probably saved about $40,000 a year in material costs because they weren't using that much salt. And most importantly, over the course of this entire 10-year study, there were no slips, trips, and falls in the parking lot, and no complaints either from customers or property managers. So this shows it can be done, right? We can manage paved surfaces in a way that maintains public safety, that helps reduce our environmental footprint, and at least sometimes can save us a bit of money. But it's not easy. You need to have someone who knows how to make that prescription for that site on that day. So the proper training of contractors is important. Contractors having information about the conditions they're managing is important, and contractors being empowered to make the decisions they're trained to make is really important as well. So there are, again, some of these better practices out there. We don't see them broadly adopted yet, and the reason largely comes back to liability, as one would expect. And so this is the real challenge in front of us now. We do think, though, that New Hampshire has figured this one out. So we often talk about what we call the New Hampshire model. So New Hampshire, like Ontario and everyone else in Eastern North America, has this issue with increasing chloride concentrations in freshwater ecosystems. New Hampshire has a very similar law that we do in Ontario. In Ontario, we call the Occupiers Liability Act, that says anyone who owns or maintains a property is responsible, it's a duty of care to people using that property. What New Hampshire did a number of years ago is they amended their law that says, in the case of winter maintenance, if you can demonstrate you've taken state-recognized training, you've passed a state-recognized exam, and you've used state-recognized best practices, you're deemed to meet that duty of care, and the person that hired you meets their duty of care as well. So it really cuts to the heart of that liability issue. And so we think that this can be applied in Ontario. We have, again, those best practices exist, we have a law that's very similar, we have a training certification program through things like the Smart About Salt Program, and most importantly, we have a broad cross-sectoral support for this program. So we convened and said as a member of something we call the Ontario Freshwater Roundtable that includes representatives from conservation authorities, some of the large contracting industries and industry associations, and their client base, the large big-box stores and property owner associations. And we're all in agreement that this is a shared problem with a shared solution, and the shared solution is the New Hampshire model. So that's what brings us here today. This is something that our Board of Directors passed a resolution in support of Ontario considering the New Hampshire model, and we're now doing a presentation like this to many councils in the watershed, trying to raise kind of a broad swell of support for this approach. And so that's, that's the reason we're in front of you today. I will say, though, sense in front of you, there are other ways that municipalities can help to reduce this, this challenge. You can yourself, if you hire contractors, make a commitment to hire trained and certified contractors. I say that anytime in front of a municipality or a school board, anybody that may have larger contracts, because there are very few certified contractors in this watershed, because clients aren't demanding it, and because clients aren't demanding it, contractors aren't getting the certification. If, if the contractors aren't getting the certification, the individual property owners can't hire a certified contractor because there aren't any certified contractors. So it's this real kind of feedback loop that provides kind of a negative feedback. So what I try to recommend to larger organizations that have the ability to make this a requirement of their, of their contracts, if you can make that requirement, you will increase the number of certified contractors out on the landscape, making it easier for the individual store owners or property owners to hire one as well. Again, sharing weather data where possible. We know a lot of municipalities have really sophisticated weather information, they make decisions based on. Contractors often don't, so if there's anything you can do to share information with contractors working for you or in your municipality, it would allow them and support them in making those difficult decisions, that would help. And then finally, we didn't talk about roads in this presentation, but roads obviously are another area where, that receive a lot of salt. We didn't talk about roads in part because we know municipalities are doing a lot to improve their practices on roads. We're seeing across the watershed that application rates are dropping, so the amount of salt applied per kilometer is, is going down, and that's exactly what we want to see, because we're not seeing roads get less safe in association. So I think municipalities, whether it's councils or staff, should be congratulated for, for taking those efforts and should be encouraged to continue on that path of incremental improvements. So with that, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for your time and council's time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodyear and Mr. Thompson. Questions or comments from members of council? Councillor, we'll start with Councillor Drage, our representative on the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority.
Thank you, worship. Thank you for the presentation. It's always, I always learn something every time you give that presentation. I think this is about the 10th time I've heard it, but I really appreciate you coming out tonight and letting the rest of council hear what's happening out there on that watershed. I'm wondering if our staff could comment on how Innisville is being smart about salt with our winter operations and what we're doing to align kind of with the, the presentation we've had with the LSRCA tonight.
Manager Magrey.
Three, worship, to Councillor Drage. Yes, so staff are actively engaged with the Conservation Authority and continuing to work with them closely as we work towards kind of those salt management goals. But I would actually like to introduce Stephen Dollmeyer. So Stephen recently joined the Town of Innisville in our operations team as our roads and fleet manager. So I'd actually like to invite him up to speak, to share some of the ongoing work that we're doing in terms of salt management.
Absolutely, and welcome to the Town of Innisville, Stephen.
Thank you very much for having me. Through you, Madam Mayor, to the councillor. Town of Innisville, we're currently in the process of updating our salt management plan. That will be coming back to council after the winter season to have a further discussion. We're also working with the Conservation Authority on updating our winter operations plan to enhance us with our salt usage, along with the best practices that have been outlined through the Conservation of Ontario. Right now, we are currently implementing some of the changes that we've noted. Calibrations are going to be done a little bit more frequently, so we will actually have our trucks calibrated, locked down on spreader rates, so then we can know how much material is being posted down, along with our GPS data from our Geotab data, to make sure that we are following to our proper best practices.
While you're there, Stephen, maybe I'll ask a question too. So we also use like a pickled salt or a sand salt mix instead of straight salt, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to yourself. We do use a different type of material. We do a 5% sand mix with white salt, rock salt, and then if there is some kind of potential freezing rain, we will add a little bit extra salt just to sweeten the load up, but we particularly reuse a sand 5% blend with salt.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Stephen?
Not Stephen.
Non-Stevan? Okay, thank you, Stephen. Councillor Waters.
Thank you, worship. Thanks very much for the presentation. I've been warning council of the dangers of salt for, for years, and I'm not too sure it's, it's been heard, but as, as your graph shows, it's, you know, it's, Lake Simcoe was in serious trouble. I'm just kind of curious, with your modeling that you do, salt is still going to impact the lake, but what does your model say in terms of, you know, instead of a couple of decades before Lake Simcoe hits that, that chronic level, if you're using these lower amounts, what does, what do the models say in terms of, you know, do we still hit that chronic level, or do, are we able to curtail the model?
Through you, worship. I'm not sure we, we have detailed enough models to accurately answer your question, Councillor Waters. I think that the, the rate of increase at the moment suggests that we're going to cross that threshold sometime in, in the early 2100s. If we are able to bring about this change that we've advocated tonight, along with continual best practices in municipal and provincial roads management, we're hoping to slow the rate of increase with the development that's going on in the watershed. I'm not sure the trend can be reversed, but we want to kind of hold the line, is, is what we're, we're aiming for, is our, kind of our realistic goal. I'm not sure, Bill, if you have anything to add to that? No? Yeah, sorry that we don't have that, that detailed information.
I guess so. So my point is, is that, is that we're going to slow it down, but we're not going to stop it completely. So the lake is still, you know, it's not going to be in my generation, it's going to be the next generation that the lake is going to be severely impacted. I was a little disappointed here that you've only said that, that we can't be naive enough that we can stop salt, but I know in many Scandinavian countries, you know, they're using a lot less than us, than we use, and, and they're seem to be doing quite fine. I presented to council a couple of years ago the idea of using radiant concrete out of Northern, I think it was Northern Illinois University had come up with concrete where it's not where you run wires through it, but you basically put graphite in the, in the concrete, and it becomes radiant heater. I suggested at that time that for the bypass going through Badford, that 100 meters before and after it on the bridge, they use radiant concrete. As, as an example, I presented it to, to, I can't remember who the person was in staff at that time, about an opportunity to do some research around that, but I've heard it go, it has actually gone nowhere. So I think there is an alternative. I'm just surprised that we're still only considering so. So for, for walkways and things around buildings, you know, we should be, you know, recognizing that, you know, radiant surfaces is a great way to, to curtail that. And so I just, it would be nice to see that type of investigation as an alternative, because that is a no-salt solution, and if people decried the, the energy it's going to use, if we took a look at the energy that all these AI companies are going to be using over the next generations, it's a pittance in terms of what they're going to demand. So it, yes, it's going to require more energy, but I think it's a serious solution that we should be looking. It can't be, it can't do all roads, I agree with you. It might be able to do small parking lots, walkways, that kind of stuff. So there is an alternative. I'd just like you to look at that as opposed to saying that salt is the only way, because it's, you know, all we're doing is just giving yourselves a little more time before we kill the lake. So just a comment, thank you.
Response, Mr. Goodyear?
Excellent point, through you, worship. Don't want to preclude innovation or, or alternative best practices. I think Mr. Thompson was, was just trying to be practical in the, in the current moment that we don't have viable alternatives on a broad scale, but definitely concede on, you know, certain applications covering walkways, heating walkways, alternative deacers are viable in certain situations, just not broadly.
Councillor Isis?
Thank you, worship. Just a question with regards to the roads in Innisville. The, most of the busy roads are actually county roads, and I would guess that that's where a large percentage of, of the salt gets put because they're busier roads. Is, is the county on board with, with, you know, these types of strategies to, to reduce the use of salt?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, excellent point. As you heard from your, your manager of roads, you typically use a salt-sand mix in Innisville. Simcoe County tends to use straight salt, so they do have a larger kind of per square meter or per kilometer impact than the town does. We do have something we call a Lake Simcoe Salt Working Group, where we have kind of biannual meetings with all roads managers from across the watershed, as well as people involved with source water protection and community planning. The town has been very involved with that, that program over the years, and, and the county's been involved as well. So the conversation is certainly out there. It is, every, every municipality has its own challenges.
And just to follow up, just, just a question about that study with the different salt rates. You showed just as effective with less rate, but is there a time factor where the salt, a higher rate will more quickly get the roads bare? Because you can see just by driving around in the wintertime, there's a huge difference in what's applied and the state of the road. The busier roads have to get salted quicker, so just curious about that.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, definitely, definitely the, the temperature, the amount of traffic a road gets, all of that does play a role. The example that Mr. Goodyear showed is typically what we recommend, or what researchers recommend for sidewalks, where it's a little simpler. Sidewalks are more similar to one another than, than roads are similar to one another, so we certainly don't recommend any particular amount to be used on roads because we don't have that knowledge. Again, we try to say that people who have that appropriate training should be the ones making those decisions, but be aware of the considerations on the lake.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Drage?
Thanks, your worship. Could you comment on like the big weather change events we have in the wintertime? I know we've had conversations over this, when you have minus 20 and then, you know, plus 5 the next day, how that impacts, how the, how the salt runs into our rivers and lakes?
Yes, excellent question, councillor. Through you, Madam Mayor, there's, there's a number of layers to that question, so bear with me if I take a bit of time here. And it really does come down to the fact that weather is changing, the climate is changing, and so what we're seeing in And so what we're seeing in the Lake Simcoe watershed is what used to happen when I was younger, is you'd get snowpack over the entire winter, and then in the spring it would melt. We don't see that anymore. We see that the snow melts two or three times per winter. This past winter maybe a bit of an exception, but typically we get those small events in the winter, and every time it was one of those melt events, that's when you start to see those spikes in chloride like we saw in the Western Creek, in Newmarket. Those were winter melt events. The other challenge associated with changing winter practices is if the, or changing winter weather rather, is if the ground remains frozen, but there's a rain event, much more material gets washed off the landscape into the river than would have if that water had come down as snow. The other, over the longer term, challenge for us is going to be climate change in the decades to come, and unfortunately, the climate projections we're working with at the authority suggest that by the end of the century, the average winter temperature will be about zero degrees. And to me, that says the weather's going to be crummy, there's going to be lots of ups and downs, lots of freezing rain, lots of melt and refreeze, which means much more risk to be managed on the roads and on parking lots. So if anything, a driver for more winter maintenance. Of course, being as we are in a bit of a snow belt, that's probably going to continue on as well, because Georgian Bay will likely remain open and warmer for longer periods in the winter, so we're going to have probably more of those large snow events like we did last winter. So again, all tends to suggest that this challenge is going to get worse in the future rather than going away, unfortunately.
Thank you so much. So somebody's probably keeping their eye on the new technology. I know a few years ago, it was all about beet juice. Is there somebody who is looking at new technology and innovation as far as alternatives to salt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So there are a number of researchers at universities in Ontario who are exploring, in some cases, extremely innovative technologies. Some of our colleagues at Toronto Region Conservation Authority are testing individual technologies like the beet juice, for example. They've done a number of tests on beet juice, as has colleagues at Credit Valley Conservation. So there's certainly, this is an area that a lot of people are trying to find, to Councillor Waters' point, a lot of people are trying to find those innovative solutions to try to find a way into this puzzle with newer technologies.
And then I often wonder if the cost of salt was artificially inflated, would that create more incentive for contractors to use less? I know years ago, people used to say that farmers would put on too much pesticides or herbicides, and the farmers would say, "It's too expensive to do that. We only put on exactly what we need to put on that will be absorbed by the plant." So I wonder if there was an opportunity to create that pressure around salt, but I guess that's not our decision to make, is it?
No, Madam Mayor, it probably isn't. But I think it is an economic landscape, and I think cost decisions do undermine, underline everything. Salt is inexpensive. The prices I've heard typically $100, $150 per ton, ranges a bit from year to year. Insurance costs are not cheap. I've heard from contractors that their deductibles can be $4,000 per event, right? So you'd have to raise the cost of salt a lot before it starts to kind of balance out the costs of even a claim that gets settled.
Very good point, thank you. And my last comment would be one of maybe a communication or an education campaign for residents. I probably get, I want to say, two or three calls a week during the winter, people complaining, maybe they've come from a more urban environment, or they're driving, you know, from Innisville into Barry or Barry into Innisville, and they're saying, "The roads in Barry are completely bare, and then we come into Innisville and you guys aren't doing your job." And so I talk to them about the, you know, the sand and the salt and the opportunity to put less salt into the lake and the chloride levels in the lake. And as soon as, you know, we have that 20-minute conversation, they're good with it. "Oh, well, that makes sense. Okay, great, I'm glad." So, but it's hard to have that 20-minute conversation with 40,000 people. So maybe we could, and I'm looking at our manager of communications there, that maybe we could work on a campaign this winter to help people understand why our roads look the way we work and why we don't go to bare asphalt in the winter. And my last comment will be that on one of your earlier pictures, I was holding my breath because I thought the picture of those little mounds of salt might have been from our own parking lot, because we're very good at our roads, and I agree, we're doing and following best practice for the roads, but the contractors that we're hiring to do our parking lots, I think we could do a better job. I don't know if it's the amount of salt that they're putting down, or if it's the equipment that they're using, because it'll be nothing, and then a blob, and then nothing, and then a blob. So I'm just putting that out there too for staff, that maybe we can make sure that our contractors have the Smart About Salt certification before they get a contract with us. And seeing no other, I want to thank you so much for your presentation. It's, it is, it is a scary thought, but it's also good that you're here in front of us and that we're all thinking about it, and that we're looking at best ways to make it better. And I know through, with my source water hat on, that Barry does have an issue, that they have an issues contributing area for sodium in there, and they've got special policies in that area to use less salt. So I know that it is an issue and is something we're going to keep working on, and I'm really glad that the two of you are working on it. So with that said, could I please ask for a mover and a seconder, please, to receive the presentation with thanks? Moved by Councillor Drudge and seconded by Councillor Zanella. All those in favor, that is carried. Thank you again for being with us, much appreciated. Next, we'll go on to delegations by members of the public, and we have a delegation this evening from Reagan Montgomery. And Ms. Montgomery, whenever you're ready, please come to the podium. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is not my first time giving a presentation on Uber. If you remember, it was somebody giving a presentation in the past, it was me. So I have been a resident and repair of the Town of Innisville for more than 20 years, and I live just down the road at IBR and 25th Side Road. I'm just first going to go over if we can do the next slide, or do I do that here? I'm not sure. Oh, yes, that looks terrible. I'll just explain. Okay, so just at the beginning of August, there is a slight change. It didn't really change very much, it was just a voucher system. I believe it's just an accounting for staff as they get all the invoices, they can speak more to that. But it didn't really go particularly well. I got the email from the town, and I clicked the little button, and I thought I had all my vouchers, and then when I went to go and use them, because there are four separate vouchers, I only actually had two. So the little email and you've been's all set up didn't actually work. So I'll just go over the four vouchers that there are. When I'm going anywhere in Innisville, from, you know, let's say my house to No Frills, right? Pretty close. I'm offered a voucher, 30 of them a month, and it's just $4 off. Whatever the Uber price is, I get $4 off. That's what it says, that's actually not what happens, ever. I never, ever, ever get a $4 voucher, and I'll explain in a bit. The next one is a flat fee of $5 to get to like the go station, or not the go station, sorry, the closest go stop on Young Street. So again, my house, if it's $15 to get from my house to Young Street, just here actually, just right there at the go stop right there, it doesn't matter what the price is, I'm only going to be charged $5 or $5.10. I'll just save $5. The next one is, I want to go anywhere. If I want to go and use a hub like the library, again, doesn't matter what the price is, as long as I start or end my trip at the library, I'm going to only be charged $4. And then the final one is the $6 one, and that's for anywhere, again, doesn't matter the price, and to the go station, start or end at the go station, that one is $6. So those are the four different vouchers. And so I do have them all four on my phone now, but it doesn't really work. So if we just go to the next page, you can kind of see, you kind of see, oh, yep, there I am, there's all my vouchers, right? One, two, three, four. And that's my phone, I kind of cut out that center, because you don't need to know my Visa number, so if we just go onto the next slide, I just wanted, I wanted to show you, this is, that's the library, this is where I most frequently use Uber. So if I want to go down to the mall, like Tanger's Outlet Mall, I'll walk over, or what a lot of other people do, they'll first take an Uber to, from their home, if they live, let's say up at Big Bay Point, they take an Uber to the library, $4, and then they'll call another Uber from the library down to the outlet mall, $4. Because I'm talking about people who are living on the edge, right? Like they need to grind it out and save any way they can, because that one-way trip for them can be over $30, right? If you can bring that down to round trip 16 instead of 60, that's a huge difference, right? So that, and I also like this photo, because when I talk about the next thing, see how it's nice and sunny? And that's really great, but sometimes, like a lot of the times that I use it over, I don't know, winter, it is really cold and it's dark, and that's where I'm standing. So if you kind of think about what I'm talking about in your head, also try to picture I'm really cold and trying to use my phone at minus 15, and it's not always the greatest. We can have a look at the next slide. Here we go, this is what I want to talk about and why there's no such thing as a $4 voucher. It doesn't happen, it never happens. So here, can we look, if we look at first at the one on the right, that's a trip that I took, not the No Frills one, the other one on the right there, yes, yes. So I'm going, I picked up my 25-pound bag of dog food, and I'm going home, because I'm not carrying it. And if you see, there's the two prices, if you look down, there's Innisville Transit. It was $11 and change, but I now have my $4 voucher, yeah, and now the price that I'm going to be responsible for is $7.54. But if I don't use Innisville Transit at all and actually hit the button for Uber X, I get to be picked up right away and go straight home, and the difference in price is 45 cents. 45 cents. Yes, the Town of Innisville will be billed $4, because that's what happens when you use Innisville Transit every single solitary time, including how I got here tonight, the first thing that happens is the price goes up and the quality of service goes down. I like, government fingers all over that. Price up, service down. Because when I take an Innisville Transit from just the parking lot in, at No Frills, and see how it says three minutes there? If I take Uber X, I will have a driver in front of me within three minutes. If I choose Innisville Transit, I have no idea when a driver's going to come. No clue. Because Uber may actually, and this is what drives me crazy and happens all the time, is that they are so desperate to connect rides with ride shares, I can be connected with somebody who has just left the go station, and I need to stand there and wait for that person who's come from the go station to drive all the way down to 20th Side Road and IBR, and then I hop in with my bag of dog food, and then we drive 15 meters across the parking lot, because the person inside the vehicle works at Guacamix Mart there. And so then we go that 15 meters, they hop out, and we've done a ride share. And I had to wait 15 minutes for an Uber to come and get me and do a ride share for 15 meters, and then I get to go home. And stuff like that happens all the time. And it's the same thing, this is another day in August, that's in May, you can see there's almost no difference in price, 45 cents or 54 cents, that's the difference between using Innisville Transit and using Uber X. Uber X is a higher quality service, because I don't have to worry, I know when the Uber is coming, and I don't have to worry about who's going to get in there. I've been in with tweakers, that's never fun, I'm not kidding. My co-rider's a tweaker, kicking the chair the entire time, and for that, I get to save myself 54 cents. And I have no idea when my ride's going to start and when it's going to end. And so even coming here tonight, because, so it's a flat rate from my house to this location, if I did Uber X and drove straight here without the chance of ding ding, another rider being added, and I have, again, no idea, I could be almost here and another rider would be added, and we can go all the way back and drive right past my front door, pick up my neighbor, and then come all the way back, and I would pay, because I use Innisville Transit, I would pay $4. But again, my receipts show this tonight, it was, it was $9 for me to come here directly, Uber X, but I only paid four. But you know who paid nine? The town did, because the price went up to 13 when I chose Innisville Transit, and then I only paid four and the town paid nine. If I just paid nine, I would have just come without any of this nonsense. So I'm, I'm just, it's, can we just look at the last one? This is the type of stuff that I was leaving the go station, we were coming along Maple View, and then ding ding, we had to turn around, and we drove eight minutes back to the go station, and then picked up somebody, and then eight minutes back, so I've been in the vehicle for more than 15 minutes, and I'm right back where I started from, and the person that I've been, has been added to my ride lives completely not on my way. I have to go all the way up, as you can see, I got to go drop off this person. So once we got to like where I'd been when this person had been added, we drove three more kilometers, and then we did like another, like, I don't know, 10-minute detour. It added 30 minutes to my ride, it's not even a 20-minute ride from my house to the go station, right? But it was 50, it was 50 minutes that day. And I've been told that this is good and proper, and this is okay, because it saves the town money. I don't understand how that's possible. The math ain't mathin'. When I look, every single solitary time, the price goes up for Innisville Transit, and then the discounts applied. So I get a higher price and lower quality of service. And I need an explanation, because I don't know why I need to be driven all over, hell's half baker, like as if I'm a parcel and worth nothing for it to cost more. I need an explanation, and I don't want another team meeting or another conversation. I want you to show me in writing how it's possible that it's saving the town money for me to be driven all over, all right?
Thank you very much.
That's my piece, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Carrer first, if he has a response.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'll do my best to explain a little bit of it. So when we started the ride share program, it was predicated on Uber Pool, and I'll try to keep the nomenclature clean tonight, but Uber Pool was sort of that first attempt of Uber's technology to do ride matching and ride pooling. And that was built on Innisville's first-of-its-kind sort of Uber partnership at offering a municipal service. Just this summer, as mentioned in the presentation, we did move over to a voucher model system. And by doing so, it does unlock some potential for the town to look at the technology and the algorithm of how those trips are pooled and matched, and essentially how far you would go out of your way, so to speak, to pick up a second rider. And so that's under the Uber X. But I also wanted to highlight or touch on sort of the pricing. Being on that initial Uber Pool- Being on that initial Uber Pool, the town's rates are actually a fixed rate, so it doesn't go up and down, it's predicated on distance and time, and it's meant to be a fixed rate, whereas Uber X, which is still an option in Innisville and anywhere else, is based on price surging. And price surging is a two-way street. If it's 12:00 AM on New Year's Eve, your price surging will take the price way above the rates. Other parts of the day, you'll actually find, as shown in the example, that Uber X is very competitive with that $4 discount. And so there are actually the circumstances where it might make sense, as a judgment case, to actually use the Uber X. Now, staff are working with Uber to evaluate if it makes sense and to implement the latest technology for that ride pooling. And we're looking at that as part of the overall comprehensive fare structure review that we presented at the last council meeting as part of the Transit Master Plan. So certainly some good points made there tonight. We do think that the technology, from what we've heard from Uber, could have about a 20% savings in terms of the average cost or distance that would be traveled. That said, we do expect there will be some level of, I guess, going out of your way, so to speak, to pick up a second rider, and we do see the benefits both environmentally and from a cost perspective in doing so. So from the town's perspective, we do think there's room to improve, but the system itself is, it's predicated on older technology that we're looking, looking to update.
Thank you, Mr. Carrer. Can you talk a little bit about the, the fixed rate not being the fixed rate?
So through you, Mayor Dolan, I might need a little more clarity on, on that one. So the $4 off is $4 off the fixed prices, so that's, those really don't fluctuate. But Uber X does fluctuate. And so the examples that we saw today, there are times where, without a ride share, just Uber X, one person, one destination, it could be relatively similar. But the vouchers and the hubs themselves, those are, as far as we're aware, working correctly, charge the $4 or $5 that it's supposed to.
Okay, so Ms. Montgomery, I would suggest that you, you know, speak to them, if, if you're seeing that you're supposed to go to a hub, and it's supposed to be a certain price, and then you're about, you're being charged more than that, then, then you need to communicate that to town staff so that they can, they can fix that. Please.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I probably have a couple hundred screenshots, and I have yet to see where I would win or even get anywhere close to a $4 discount by using Innisville Transit. Like, it's always around a dollar. Like, I, I don't know where the average ride, I understand what you're saying, like, you drive 10 kilometers, and that's, that's, that's the fixed price. It's not going to fluctuate for the town, but it fluctuates for me. But it never makes sense for me to, unless I, to use the, the $4 in its savings, because there's never anything close ever at any time. And I use, use it to get to and from work. That's the time, that's the busiest time. I've seen surge pricing, and, you know, I wait five minutes, and then, because sometimes a $13 ride, I've seen it be like 42, right? But that's like me going into Berry, so that Innisville Transit doesn't count, it's not going to work anyways, right? So it's so rare. I'm talking, me going out in the morning, coming home in the evening, Uber X is always cheaper. Like, the, I never get, I never, I get 30, you know, $4 off vouchers a month. I can't use any of them, ever. I'll never save. I'll never save a dollar. Like, because it's so close in price, right? It's a, it'll be a dollar or less difference between Uber X and Uber Transit. So what good is 30 vouchers a month, right, for $4, when I never use any of them? They're, they're useless. You're not offering me anything.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to stop and let other, because I'm not understanding. So Counsel Drudge.
Thank you, Worship. If I may ask, are those, are those trips relatively short trips, like, from your house to No Frills or vice versa? Like, within the hub of Alcona?
Yeah, but it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any difference, right?
I guess what I'm trying to say, so someone who lived in, in, say, Guilford or Cookstown, that was trying to get that $4 savings to go to, to No Frills in Alcona, say, from Cookstown.
You would still only be sa, you, in that case, you'd still only get a $4 discount, right? So, okay, so mine were like $8. Well, yours might be $18 and $17. Do you know what I'm saying? That would be the difference in your case.
I guess the question I'm asking is, would you see only a dollar difference
Yes.
On such a long trip? So Uber X would be just as competitive?
You have phones, I invite you to check it out yourself, right? Try from your home to No Frills. Try it out. See, and try it out at different times, maybe three times between now and your next council meeting. Try out the Uber app and see, like, if you try it from here, it's not going to work, because right off the bat, you're here, so it's $4. Like, it's just a flat rate from here. But I'm talking about going, you know, your house to No Frills, your house to your friend's house. If you're going to drive in the car from point A to point B in Innisville, use the app yourself, and I highly doubt you'll see more than a dollar's difference in price, making for everyone the $4 voucher almost useless, right? That's my guess, and I invite you to try.
Okay.
Thank you, Worship. I'll look into that, thank you. This is a, this is a question for staff. So with, with our new Transit Master Plan and how we're looking at Uber for the future, and we're going to a zone system, and that will be flat fees anywhere in each zone, this is going to eliminate this issue, is it not?
Through Mayor Dolan, over to Counsel Drudge. So we are still evaluating the details of a more of a distance or fare-based approach, but I do think the concern over the $4 discount could potentially be alleviated, and it would be a lot more fair in terms of, or consistent in terms of what you could expect for fares.
So just one, one last comment to Ms. Montgomery. So the zones, if it goes as planned, you'll be able to travel, say, Alcona being its own little zone from, say, your house to No Frills, and anywhere in between, will be a set fee from any home, anywhere, there'll be no more hub. And then as you cross over to different zones, you will have a slight increase as you cross each zone. So I think it will help in your situation, in the aspect of when you do those short trips, there'll just be a flat fee. And then as you progress in a different zone. So hopefully, our plan for the future will help alleviate some of your problems.
There, there's, I'm sorry if I didn't make myself clear, I, like, there was, the issue is two-parted. It's that, one, I got $30 vouchers that are useless, right, for any of my trips. The second one was that timing, and it happens all the time with these ride shares. Like, this is a beautiful day here in July, it was like around 10:00 AM, I had something in the morning to do, and so I walked up to the library, and I ordered an Uber to take me up to the go station. And I had to wait the whole time for somebody, because I could see it happens all the time. There were three drivers, I was chatting with them, waiting in the parking lot. I knew who them, they've driven me tons of times. And they're not busy, so nothing was happening. There were drivers standing right there, and I had to do a ride share with somebody, yet again, coming from the go station. That day it was fine, because it was so beautiful, and there was a slight breeze, and we were chit-chatting, catching up, and then, but if you actually use some common sense, it makes no sense that I'm doing a ride share with somebody who's coming from my destination. How is that even remotely possible that we're on, it makes no sense. And so, he, and because he's coming from the go station, he doesn't need to come to the library as a hub to get the discount, because he's paying $6 from automatically as soon as he exits the go station. And so he drives, ah, it's fine, because it was beautiful, and I was not in a rush or anything, and it wasn't minus 20, and it wasn't dark, and I wasn't alone, I was chatting with people that I hadn't seen in a while. But I waited all that time for him to come, and the driver pulled in, and I hopped in the Uber, and then we went across the street to the Tim Hortons, and we dropped the other guy off. And then we headed back to the go station. Like, that was our ride share for environmental purposes. Like, come on, our, my ride share was going across the street from the library to the Tim Hortons, and that's why I had to stand there so we could book a ride share. Like, come on.
So Ms. Montgomery, am I understanding, so, I think I misunderstood. So you're saying that, are you being, this is my question to you, are you being charged correctly when you're being picked off or dropped off at a hub?
I'm, uh, sometimes I'm not, but Uber automatically refunds me, and in those cases, they refund the town too. Like, the whole thing is reversed. It's a bit of a pain, because it takes a day or two. It used to be, I used to have to send it to the town, I have not had to do that, I've always gotten my money back completely. Sometimes they'll even, before I've even sent them a message, they've picked it up, and I've gotten my money back, like, the whole thing. So in those cases, I am not complaining about the, it's just an administrative burden on myself, because I have to write down and, and follow up and check that it gets done. But I'm always, it's always fine, it gets sorted out, right?
Okay.
It's these bizarre and utterly absurd
Yeah.
Ride shares. Like, come on.
I, I hear, I hear you. Our, our staff have heard you.
Okay.
The, the other thing I would say to you is, are you engaged with the new Transit Master Plan that we're working on?
No.
Okay, if not, I would encourage you, it's on the website. I think we finished with the public engagement process, now we've had three or four public meetings, but, but the, all the information is on the website. Are we still taking comments, Brandon?
Through Mayor Dolan, yes, happy to take any comments.
Okay. So I would urge you to look at that. It, it does combine, as Counsel Drudge talked about, these zones, but it's also fixed route. So, you know, that's
I know, there's ups and downs to it.
There's a blessing in disguise.
But like, there's something I think is really important to note, right? Like, Uber pays their drivers a different rate per kilometer for an Uber X or an Uber Share, right? So the algorithm is running. So if they can skim that, you know, 14 meters of a ride share and pay their driver that, like, you know, quarter of a penny less, that's what the, the algorithm does. It's not a person being spiteful. I understand that, but it is a programmer being spiteful.
Thank you for your feedback on the system. It's, it's much appreciated. I do encourage you to, to look up the master, the Transit Master Plan, and, and make your comments on that as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other questions before we let Ms. Montgomery go? Counsel ICs.
Oh, it was more to staff, sorry. Thank you, Worship. Just, just a comment on, on the voucher system. It's relatively new. I assume there's being an analysis done on how many vouchers are being used versus what the old system was. Can you comment on, like, are we seeing a lot of unused vouchers monthly, as, as the speaker has suggested she's having that problem?
Through Mayor Dolan to Counsel ICs. So the vouchers are relatively new, they were launched this summer. We do continue to evaluate the ridership data and the overall uptake of the various vouchers. What I would say is, overall ridership has stayed steady from the previous model to the voucher model overall.
Other comments? Counsel Drudge.
Thank you, Worship. I just thought of one thing. So before the vouchers came in, was there a discount for any trip, like, like, how she took from her home to No Frills? Was there a discount in place?
Through Mayor Dolan, yes. So any trip that wasn't to a hub was to receive a $4 discount, and we didn't change the fare structure in that regard through the voucher program.
Good, thank you.
Final comments. Seek none, a mover and a seconder, please, to receive the delegation from Ms. Montgomery. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counsel ICs, all those in favor. That is carried. Thank you again for taking the time, and I hope you don't have to ride share on the way home. All right, next, we have item seven, which is reports from municipal associations. Any work that you've been doing on behalf of the town of Innisville? Counsel Richardson.
Last Monday, we had our meeting, our board, our library board meeting after having a bit of a summer break. We had a presentation from Amanda Fellows, who is from CFS Counseling and Wellbeing. So she spoke to the programs that they offer, including that they're part of our teen nights that happen every, every week. The other thing that we talked about was, our fundraising committee has gotten together again, and we have a new initiative, which is a Buy a Shelf, Build a Future campaign. So it's going to be helping with the new children's area that's happening, and so you can buy a shelf for $250, and then a personalized name plate would go on the shelf, and that money would be used towards interactive play features that would go on the ends of the shelf. So it's a great way to help support the library, that sort of thing, and you can buy your shelf online on the library website.
Thank you, Counsel Richardson. Counsel Zanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On South Simcoe Streams, this year, we partnered this summer with Nautuasaga Conservation Authority on two stream restoration projects. So if you would like to join us and find out more about how to support the rehabilitation by planting potted trees and shrubs along the newly restored riverbanks, we have two fall events coming up in Adjilatoss, just south of Alliston, and that will be on October 4th and October 25th, from 9:30 to 12:30. So if you're interested in helping us, get in touch with me, and I'll let you know how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zanella. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Worship. Yesterday, we had county, and one of the things that came up was the actual ice storm and the response that the province has given. I'm going to be reading from the report itself. It says, "In response to the impacts of the 2025 ice storm, the province has developed a municipal ice storm assistance program. Due to the widespread impacts of the storm, the specific assistance program was created, supplanting the existing municipal disaster recovery assistance to municipalities directly. The program uses the same funding formula established by the previous program, with the province covering up to 75% of the costs, up to the first 3% of the municipality's own purpose tax levy, and 95% of costs beyond that." So this means that the province is going to be stepping in and potentially helping the town. I know that Director Bowman has already put in a notice of interest, and they have to, by the end of October, put something forth with council approval, a council resolution. So this is good for us in that regard, that it may assist with the recovery costs for the ice storm itself. Second of all, we had a heritage advisory meeting, and we finalized the details for the Heritage Walk, that's going to be on October 5th, 12 to 2, rain or shine. They're just asking anyone who shows up, they park at the rec center, and they can walk over to the St. James United Church at that point. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments to make? Thank you. Next, we'll go on to our consent list, so we'll start with all of the staff reports that staff have, and recommendations that are in your agenda. If council are happy with the staff report, we'll have a confirmatory bylaw at the end of the meeting and approve them all. But if you'd like to pull something to discuss further, ask questions, change the recommendation, we'll do, we'll do that in committee of the whole. So we'll start with A1, Special Council Meeting Minutes dated September the 10th. A2, Council Meeting Minutes dated September the 10th. B1, the summary of the Innisville Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting. B2, the summary of the Innisville Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting. B3, the summary of the Electoral Engagement Advisory Committee meeting. C1, 3455 Crescent Harbor Road, Class 1 Variation CPPS, our shores. C2 was withdrawn by the proponent. D1, Award of Contract for the Kalarni Beach Road Urbanization. I just had one question about that, if I could. So emails went out, or signs were put up, saying when the street was going to be closed, Kalarni Beach, and I think the dates come and gone. So I just wondered if we were going to be updating that closure information. I don't need, I don't need an answer tonight, I just need to know that hopefully we'll, we'll be updating it.
Mayor Dolan, yes, we will be updating that. Thank you.
D2, the Indigenous Relations Framework Update. Could I ask somebody if they would pull that item, please, for me? Thank you, Counsel Drage. E, bylaws. There are none this evening, and there's no correspondence for action. G1, proclamations. We have two proclamations, dwarfism awareness and the National Breastfeeding Week, October 1st to 7th. We have no motions, which notice has been given. We have, I'm sorry, Ms. Toma.
Thank you, Mayor Dolan. We did add this correspondence for action. Thank you.
Thank you, and I flew right by it. My apologies. So, the correspondence for action, I'd like to, I'd like to pull that for further conversation, if somebody would pull that one for me, too. Deputy Mayor, thank you. And then, we will go to, that is it. So, we'll go to the Consent List Continued, the Consent List Recommendation. So, we have two items that we're deferring to committee of the whole, and the rest of them we're approving. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counsel Zanella, Counsel Richardson, all those in favor? That is carried. And now, a motion to resolve into committee of the whole. Moved by Deputy Mayor Fowler, seconded by Counsel Constantine. All those in favor? That is carried. So, if anyone in the audience was looking for an item to be approved tonight that wasn't pulled, if it's not one of those two items, then it is going to be approved at the end of the meeting. So, the first one was the Indigenous Relations Framework Update, and Counsel Drage?
Thank you, worship. My seconder is Counsel Richardson, and I pulled this for Mayor Dolan.
Thank you. And I pulled this, so that CAO Gerchow is going to provide some comments regarding this new framework.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dolan, and I wanted to take this opportunity to share with council and the community some comments on the context for this report coming to council. This is the first time we are bringing a report on this topic to council. And Mayor Dolan, as you mentioned, next Tuesday is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, so the timing is very intentional on our part. And I just wanted to take a moment, I guess, again, to give some context for this work and why we think it's important for the town to do this work. It is part of our strategic plan. But, you know, if we think about what is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, the federal government describes it, and, you know, and it was enshrined under federal legislation, as a day that honors the children who never returned home from Indian residential schools and survivors of residential schools, as well as their families and communities. Public commemoration of the tragic and painful history and ongoing impacts of residential schools is a vital component of the reconciliation process. And, you know, if we go back in history, it was the Indian Residential School Settlement Agreement, which came into effect in September of 2007, that really set in motion, in many ways, the contemporary conversation we're having in Canada about the relationship between Indigenous communities and Canadian society. And in June of 2008, then Prime Minister Harper actually issued an apology on behalf of the Government of Canada to the former students of Indian residential schools. And I'd just like to take a moment to read the first part of the Prime Minister's statement of that day. So, he said, and I quote, "The treatment of children in Indian residential schools is a sad chapter in our history. For more than a century, Indian residential schools separated over 150,000 Aboriginal children from their families and communities. In the 1870s, the federal government, partly in order to meet its obligation to educate Aboriginal children, began to play a role in the development and administration of these schools. Two primary objectives of the residential school system were to remove and isolate children from the influence of their homes, families, traditions, and cultures, and to assimilate them into the dominant culture. These objectives were based on the assumption Aboriginal cultures and spiritual beliefs were inferior and unequal. Indeed, some thought, as it was infamously said, quote, 'to kill the Indian in the child.' Today, we recognize that this policy of assimilation was wrong, has caused great harm, and has no place in our country." So, that was the Prime Minister's statement back in 2008. And after that happened, that set in motion the work of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And if you haven't read the reports of that commission, I strongly urge you to do so. Even the executive summary of their work, which spanned a number of years, is tremendously eye-opening. It's something I think every Canadian should read. But what the commission did in their report, they, they began also just by addressing that fundamental question of what is reconciliation in the first place? And so, I just want to read a quote from the commission's report, which came out in 2015. So, it says, "To the commission, reconciliation is about establishing and maintaining a mutually respectful relationship between Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal peoples in this country. In order for that to happen, there has to be awareness of the past, acknowledgement of the harm that has been inflicted, atonement for the causes, and action to change behavior." And for me, that is the starting point for the work we're trying to do here at the Town of Innisville, and from my perspective, the reason why it was important to have this as part of the town's strategic plan. So, I think, you know, this is a long journey, a journey that perhaps will never end, a journey that communities across Canada are undertaking at different ways, different paces of activity, but it's something we've begun here at the Town of Innisville. So, this report in front of you today is meant to just be a first chapter of that story, of the work we've started as staff at the town, the relationships we're beginning to build with our Indigenous partners here locally, and there's certainly much more to come. And Mayor Dolan, if you'll indulge me, I also just want to pass the mic over to Jane Cocking to add a few words.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Dolan. I really want to acknowledge Daniela Sirodio. She's one of my team members, who has taken this on, literally starting from nothing, and building, and growing, and seeing what resources are out there and available. And we're not just speaking with local Indigenous communities. It's gone broader than that. We speak with many municipalities, both within our area and around the province. And we've also joined a national group, so that we have a forum to learn from what other communities, municipalities are doing, all through that Indigenous lens. So, as CAO Gerchow pointed out, this is not a finite report. It's never going to end, and we just want to make sure that that is well-understood, that this is a starting point, this is the accomplishments we've done so far, and our framework moving forward in truth and reconciliation.
Thank you so much to both of you. Questions or comments? Counselor Waters.
Thank you, worship. I'm just kind of curious, in this framework, have we had any feedback from Indigenous, local Indigenous groups in terms of the direction we're going, ongoing conversations with Indigenous? It's nice to be able to have conversations with, you know, other municipalities, but are we having those conversations and feedback on this particular document? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Dolan, to Counselor Waters, and then I can pass it back over to Oliver. The short answer is yes.
Yeah, and I'll elaborate on that a bit. I mean, I think this has to be a two-way conversation. We recognize that. And, you know, we have begun to do our outreach to the communities who have an interest in the Town of Innisville. And we have a recent example where the Grand Chief of the Wendat Nation actually reached out to us and proposed a meeting with Mayor Dolan. We actually had that meeting just in the last week or so. The Wendat Nation having had a long historical presence in Simcoe County back in the 17th century, or up to the 17th century. So, that's an example. You know, it was certainly the case that part of what drew us into dialogue with the Williams Treaties First Nations was the Orbit MZO and their concerns with that provincial decision. But it actually, you know, created a bit of an opportunity for us to get to know each other a bit better and just know who our, you know, who the folks across the table were, to learn more about the Williams Treaties First Nations, who remember our seven First Nations, who were, who were parties to the Williams Treaties. And, you know, we've put the offer out there to say, we want to have this dialogue. And as the report mentions, you know, as an example, I've begun to build a personal relationship with the CAO. At Rama First Nation, where we've begun to understand, you know, how their community works, and, you know, what are the issues that are important to them, and how can we work together in a way that goes beyond just routine circulation of a planning application? And I think what we'd like to do is deepen that, right? We, we have not had everyone around the table, for example, to talk about what the town's framework would like. And I think as a next step, we're planning to do that this fall, to, you know, put the invitation out there to come and meet with us, share their perspectives. You know, perhaps some will say yes, perhaps some will say no, but that's okay. You know, we're going to continue to try and build the relationships.
Counsel Constantine.
I must say, I read this document through, and it is certainly a good framework and a good beginning, but there's still much more to be done, and I applaud, applaud Innisville for this, because I think this is the first of its kind here in Innisville. So, this is a very good framework. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Constantine.
I, I'll just add that it's, it is a journey, there's no question, and we're just at the beginning of it. One of my colleagues is the mayor of Shunya, and she is an Indigenous mayor. And her favorite thing to say to me is, "Make a friend before you need a friend." So, I lean on her a lot with, you know, when we're talking about relationship with our local First Nations. We've, we've gone from like zero communication a decade ago to much more communication now. I've been to all three of our local First Nations within the last couple of years. Chief Sandy and Abosale invited me to their Indigenous, National Indigenous Remembrance Day service, which was, which was very touching. I don't know how I got on the invite. I didn't know how I got on the invite list, but I went to the ferry, I got on the ferry, I went to the island, and, and then I found out that the young man who ran one of the rec programs was an Innisville resident, and he'd reached out to Chief Sandy and said, you know, "My mayor should be invited to this. She's never been invited." So, it's great to have those little wins when you get them. Chief Big Canoe at, at Georgina Island, and of course, Chief Williams at Rama, which CAO Gerchow and I will be going to visit next week at their powwow grounds. And, and yes, the meeting with the Grand Chief from the Wendat, Grand Chief Picard. Although they're from Quebec, and they're no longer here, they have, there's many historical sites in our area because they were from here before they moved into Quebec. So, there's a lot of burial sites, there's a lot of sites that they're quite interested in. So, keeping those relationships open and the conversation honest is really important. AMO has also been doing much work in this area. They hired a women-led, Indigenous-owned consulting firm to do their Indigenous Reconciliation Action Plan, which they launched at the AMO conference in August. And, yes, so again, we're, we're all kind of building the bridge as we walk over it. We are, we're going to stumble from time to time, but because we've made friends, we're going to have friends help us make less mistakes than we would have on our own. Seeing no other comments, could I, we've got a mover and a seconder, all in favor of the recommendation. That is carried. Thank you very much. And the last item tonight is moved by Deputy Mayor Fowler. And do you have a seconder, Deputy Mayor?
Counsel Drage.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the resolution on the table? So, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing this to come to the table and wave notice and have it walked on. It is timely, because if you read the news or, or listen to the news at all, you'll know that it's, it's, it's a topic that is at the top of the premier's mind right now. So, my belief, or not my belief, the data shows in Innisville, maybe not in all municipalities, but the data shows in Innisville, that automated speed enforcement does work as a tool to slow drivers down. You can see we've, we've put the, the reduction from the speed cameras in the resolution, so the number of speeding vehicles has been reduced by 21% across the four urban and four rural school zones, and reduced the 85th percentile speed by an average of 16 kilometers an hour. You don't need to know those numbers, you just need to stand for five minutes across from Elkhona Glen School and watch the speed of those vehicles that are going down that road now. It is, it is visual. The, there are other tools that can be used, and I've never found one that works as well as this tool. And regarding the cash grab rhetoric, I'll call it that. In our case, if there is any revenue over expenditure on this program, it gets put into a special fund that can only be used for traffic calming or safety measures. So, I would hate to see this. I, I'm pretty sure the decision's already been made, but we'll, we'll go through the motions anyway. I will hate to see this, this canceled. The Ontario Chiefs of Police have also endorsed this. We have wonderfully trained, well-paid police officers that they can, can be doing much more important work getting drugs, guns, human traffickers off the road, rather than standing on a corner with a, with a radar gun. And then finally, I think one of the things that is, is really telling is that nearly three-quarters of Ontario drivers support the use of ASC in targeted areas like school zones. So, while you, the loudest voice is the, the cash grab voice, the majority of people do support automated speed enforcement as a safety tool when it's in an area targeted like a community safety zone or a school zone. So, I support this. In case you haven't figured that out yet, I support this resolution. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counsel Zanella.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate that driving over here tonight and coming up to Elkhona Glen, and the car in front of me, as soon as they saw the sign, and they almost stopped completely. So, it does work.
Thank you, Counsel Zanella. Counsel Waters.
Thank you, worship. I fully support this as well. I can't believe that the province would put the rights of speeders ahead of victims of speeding accidents, and specifically where we've targeted around schools. You know, it's obviously not a cash grab, and it's just, it, it really is frightening to see what's going to happen. You know, we'll get our money back, but it doesn't save the lives of, of children and people who get killed by speeders every year. So, I think I fully support this, and hopefully, they will change their mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Drage.
Thank you, worship. I also to fully support this. I just wanted to make one, one point. The camera was once upon a time in front of Klarney Beach Public School, and I witnessed, as you do, seeing in front of Elkhona Glen, slow traffic down. Now, that has since been gone for several months, yet that traffic is still doing under the speed limit today with no camera there in place. Just the thought of the camera being in place was enough. So, it's not about the cash grab, it's about changing people's mindsets and their, their drivers. So it's not about the cash grab, it's about changing people's mindsets and their driving habits in areas where they need to slow down.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor of the recommendation? Thank you very much. Can I just ask that we also send a copy to MPP Kanjin? Because I think that she told me that she was knocking on doors in Cookstown last weekend, and she actually was knocking on doors where residents were asking for more cameras, not less cameras. So is the mover and the seconder okay with that small addition? Yes, thank you. All right, all those in favor? That is carried unanimously, thank you very much. Next is our rise recommendation. So moved by Councillor Constantine and seconded by Councillor Ices, that the committee rise and return back into formal council session. And next is the consideration to adopt the recommendations from committee as a whole, and that's moved by Councillor Richardson and seconded by Councillor Waters. All those in favor? That is carried. And finally, our notice of motions, which we have none, and we'll go to announcements. Councillor Ices.
Thank you, Worship. Farmers Market is still operating on Thursday this week, it's Legion Week, so there will be a table there with Legion members to answer questions. Innisville Spartans are in action Saturday at 7:30 versus Stainer and Sunday at 3:30 versus Penetang. I would reiterate the Deputy Mayor's reminder about the Innisville Heritage Walk, which is on October the 5th in Stroud, between 12 and 2, starting from St. James United Church. And also in Stroud, the Wildcard Brewing is, every weekend, they're having an October Fall Fest market with craft beer, live music, and food trucks, and vendors. So look for that on the October weekends. Thank you.
Councillor Constantine?
So PUPPY Campaign, thank you. PUPPY Campaign starts on September 28th. I guess it's this Sunday from 1 to 3 at the Legion, and all are welcome. There are lots of jobs for volunteers, from PUPPY tagging, to answering phones, to dropping off and picking up PUPPY boxes. So if you would like to volunteer, please come out and sign up and help our veterans. And also on October 4th, from 5 to 9, there will be an October Fest. It costs $15 per person, and it's drinks and food trivia, and that's also to support the Legion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Constantine. Councillor Richardson.
Next Tuesday at the Innisville ID11 Library, September 30th is Imagine a Native Documentary feature from 6 to 7:30. As well, on October the 4th is the Second Annual Innis Fall Event at Town Square, which I'm really looking forward to attending. It was a lot of fun last year, I'm looking forward to this year. And then October 15th is the Remembering Garden Harvest that's at the library as well.
Thank you. Councillor Waters.
Thank you, Worship. Two items to mention is that this Thursday is the final classic car show at Innisville Beach Park, so if you haven't had a chance to go, this will be your final time before next spring. And also on Friday night is Friday Uker Night at Innisville Lions Club.
Thank you so much. Councillor Zinnella.
Thank you. Lakeside Dance has Latin dance fitness courses starting October 2nd. Also, I believe, Swing Dance and all kinds of other dancing lessons that you can take there, and that's at 2723 Arton Street in Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Saunders, word six.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yesterday, the mayor and I got to attend the Sandy Cove Seniors Wish Birthday Party in recognition of people that are 80 or over in the park. And this year, there was 120 people there, 17 of them are over 90. And if you add up all their ages, they're 18,100 years in that room, not counting the mayor and I, because we didn't make it. As well as with that, we got to present this 2025 Seniors Award to a friend of mine, Linda Luer. It's in recognition of her outstanding contributions for aged over 65 and over to strengthen and protect our community. She was really, really honored to get that. It's signed by the Honorable Raymond Chow and her honor, the Honorable Elizabeth Dumont, who is our Governor General of Ontario. And on top of that, for the third thing that they did there, the Babadooz, which is a jam band, had a function the night before and presented $3,000 to the Seniors Wish as well. So it was like a triple whammy birthday party for everybody involved. And today, we attended the 50th anniversary of the Skin Med Spa, and Katerina was pleasantly surprised to see us all there.
Thank you. Councillor Drudge.
Thanks, Worship. This Saturday is the Third Annual Roller Skate/Blade Scooter Party at the Cookstown Curling Club from 10 to 12 PM. And on every Saturday moving forward at the Cookstown Library, they're having drop-in programs and activities, and that's at 2:30.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Worship. This past while, many members of council came up to Ninth Line to do the groundbreaking for the Northern Transformer Corporation. They're investing $207 million into this project. They're going to create over 200 jobs, they're working locally, looking for engineers when the time comes. They're looking at working with Georgian College to get the young students involved as well, which is really incredible. This is a boon to our economy, and it's going to only grow from there, because it starts off really well, and we're going to build on that. The second thing is, we had the roundtable for the Innisville Community Foundation at the Innisville Community Church. We, many members of council attended, and we watched and we heard about all the incredible people that volunteer their time in this town. The energy alone in the room and the good that they want to do, it doesn't, there were people there for four-legged animals, women, men, everybody, in between, everything from food to shelter, like everything was covered. There's enough people in this town that want to do good, so I think we should throw our weight behind them and thank them for the good they do. On a side note, on October 4th upcoming, during Innis Fall, if you're going to be in the area, if you're going to be at the library between 1:45 and 3:45, Bahas of Innisville is having a multi-faith prayer in the Like Shore Library Boardroom. This is just a good chance to get out if you're curious about other faiths, or what they believe in, or what they do, and maybe find a common ground or a unity to build on the positive energy in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a few more from me. So I did attend the visitation for Mr. Ross Cotton. Ross was a former senior planner for the town. He joined us in about 2006, I believe, but he was a professional planner for over 40 years. What I remember about Ross was his very kind and gentle manner, but a quick wit. He was a man of great faith, he was also loved to golf. So he left us way too soon, but it was a pleasure to speak to his family and offer our condolences at their loss. The mayor's business breakfast is coming up on October the 15th. It's being held this year at Three Feathers on the Third Line. The cost is $30, and the tickets can be purchased through the town website, and there's some tickets left. The reason we moved it this year is so we could sell more tickets, because in years past, we had to limit the number of people that were going to come. I just wanted to thank Rotary for a wonderful harvest dinner. They did themselves proud again this year. It was a great event. And also, I was happy to attend the Spartans' first home game and drop a puck this year, and we hope for a very successful season for them. It's typically Saturday nights and Sunday afternoons, if I'm not mistaken, their home games. So please get out and support our local junior seeds. I also attended the Last Dance, the End of an Era, it was called, which was the Sunset Speedway's, the retirement of Sandra and Brian Toddish. So that site, I guess it still remains up a question as to, I'm getting a lot of people asking what's going to happen. The Toddishes are retiring, that's all I can tell you, after 16 years of working, you know, around the clock on that project. So we'll see what happens, but the team that's been running it for the last 16 years is retiring from that job. I attended yesterday the retirement for Dr. Charles Gardner. Dr. Gardner is, was, is, I guess still, the Medical Officer of Health for the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, and he's held that role for over 20 years. I can't imagine being a medical officer of health during a global pandemic. I think that would be like the worst job in the world, but he did it with grace. And if you remember back then, he was on TV every single night, giving updates and keeping people safe, at the same time getting threats to his own family. So kudos to him for a well-deserved and long retirement. His wife Cathy told me she's got about three or four vacations already planned, so he's going to be very busy. And we congratulate Dr. Lisa Simon, who will be taking over in that role. What else did I want to tell you? Oh, last night, I also participated in a Run Where You Are event. This was an event put on by about five different ground roots organizations that are all trying to encourage more people on the ballot, more women on the ballot, more underrepresented on the ballots in the 2026 municipal election. The keynote speaker was former Premier Kathleen Nguyen. She talked a lot more about her days as a school trustee in local government than she did about her time in the provincial government or as premier, but with some really encouraging words. It was a great evening, and I was proud to be one of four panelists that then answered some more questions and did a bit of a Q&amp;A with members, talking about my experiences over the years and what advice I would give to young women who are thinking about joining council seats. So it was, there was a lot of diversity in the group, there was a lot of great questions, a lot of positive energy, and I hope it translates into more names on the ballot. Just a reminder that on September 30th, it is Truth and Reconciliation Day, town offices will be closed on that day. And on the day before, as we mentioned earlier, CAO Gershaw and I will be attending a powwow for Truth and Reconciliation at Rama. And what else did I want to say? Oh, the Youth Connects Committee is going to be starting up next week, so I'm pleased to be going to speak with them. And I want to thank members of the Heritage Committee for coming out to LaFroy United Church last Sunday and taking the time out of their Sunday. Deputy Clerk Jacobs was there, and he walked through with the congregation on what designation, heritage designation would mean to them, and there was lots of great questions, and I think they really appreciated all that information while they decide what their decision's going to be. And then finally, the Innisville Minor Baseball Association had their year-end barbecue celebration. It's a growing organization, there is a ton of kids in baseball. I was pleased to see both soccer and baseball really, really growing in the town. One highlight was congratulating the 15 double-A team on winning the York Simcoe Championship, and then going on to win the Ontario Championship. It's the first time an Innisville team has ever achieved that goal of winning the All Ontario. They had 41 wins and eight losses in their season, so they really dominated. So congratulations to Coach Gronenfeld and all of the assistant coaches, and of course, the parents and the players. And a proud moment that one of the assistant coaches is our very own Mark Asselstein, who works here at the Town of Innisville in the IT Division. So really happy to be there and celebrate with all those kids. So that's it for me. I'd like to then go to the confirming bylaw and adjournment, unless I've made anyone think of something else? No? Okay, so that would be Councillor Drudge and Councillor Richardson, that we adjourn at 8:45 PM. All those in favor? That is carried. Have a great rest of the